Good afternoon. I think, in knowing that we're short on time today, we're just going to get started, if that's okay with all. So I am Commissioner Marian Lee and I am joined here by Commissioner Gerhart. Thank you very much for being here today. And I'm going to welcome our guests here today with us. We are, first off, presiding over the session on Interior Enforcement and Employment Discrimination Intimidation. Our guest today is Mr. Guillermo Perez. Mr. Perez is the President of the Pittsburgh Labor Council for Latin American Advancement, and he's also the Chair of the Education Committee for the United Steelworkers Civil and Human Rights Committee. We are also joined by Vishnu Timsina. Ms. Timsina works in the Refugee Youth Employment Program at the Jewish Family and Children's Services. We also have with us today Ms. Tracy McCants Lewis. Ms. McCants Lewis is the President of the ACLU's Board of Directors, and she's also the Associate Clinical Professor and Pro Bona Clinic Program Coordinator at the Duquesne University School of Law. Thank you very much for being here today. The city code offers protections related to employment for all individuals based on their age, ancestry, color, disability, handicap, gender, identity, expression, national origin, place of birth, race, religion, sex and sexual orientation, perceived or otherwise. These protections are enforced and we take very seriously by the Commission. We are here today to learn more about what we can do to improve the working conditions for all Pittsburghers. And in context of today's public hearing, we want to highlight discrimination faced by persons because of their religion, national origin, race and/or color. So if we can, I want to just reemphasize again that each speaker will be allotted 10 minutes to speak, and Commissioner Gerhart will help us keep time today. Thank you. Mr. Perez, can we start with you today on the question? If you could share with us what has been happening locally since the new administration has taken office? This seems a very timely question, especially with the Supreme Court's directive about the travel ban, about immigration enforcement, and other executive orders.
All right. Before I get started, I should correct the record. I am the President of the Pittsburgh Chapter of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement. My position with the steelworkers as it relates to civil rights is I am the Chair of this, I'm sorry, co-chair of the Civil Rights Committee of local 3657 of the United Steelworkers. We have a human rights department. They'd be very upset if they heard that I was in charge of it all of a sudden.
With our apologies.
So I just want to be clear about that. So again, my name is Guillermo Perez. I am the President of the Pittsburgh Chapter of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement. LACLA is a national organization with local chapters throughout the United States affiliated with the American Federation of Labor, Congress of Industrial Organizations. LACLA is often referred to as the Latino House of Labor. It was established in the early 1970s with the mission of advancing the social and economic interests of Latino working people and to bring the benefits of labor unionism to Latino workers. This afternoon, I'd like to speak on the following issues as they relate to Latino working families here in Pittsburgh and southwest Pennsylvania generally. First, I'll talk about why organized labor has a stake in what happens to undocumented families living in our area and throughout the country. Second, I'll touch on how the current ramped-up enforcement by the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, or ICE, is directly impacting the rights of undocumented workers, again, both here and around the country. And lastly, I will address what needs to be done, both by this Commission and city government, to extend the concept of sanctuary beyond churches, schools, courthouses, and government agencies to the place most of us spend the majority of our working lives, the workplace, I'm sorry, waking lives, the workplace. So why does organized labor support undocumented families? Since LACLA's founding in the early 70s, Latinos have become one of the fastest-growing ethnic communities in the United States. We accounted for more than half the U.S. population growth between 2000 and 2014. According to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, our participation rate in the U.S. workforce in 2016 led all other groups, surpassing whites, Asians, and African-Americans. To state it bluntly, the future prosperity of the United States is closely tied to the economic and social well-being of Latino workers. And when we talk about Latino workers, we're including the roughly 8 million-plus undocumented workers who come from Latin America. They make up more than two-thirds of all the undocumented people living in the United States and 15% of the Hispanic population of the United States. Four or five million of these folks live in what's called mixed-status families, meaning they live in a household in which one or more of them has legal status and others do not. For our community, the Latino community then, clearly, the plight of undocumented people in the United States is closely tied to the overall health and well-being of our families. Since 2000, the National AFL-CIO has recognized the contributions and increasing importance of Latino working families to our country's economic future by strongly supporting comprehensive immigration reform that includes a path to citizenship for the 11 million undocumented people living in the United States. And that position has not changed since the election of the present administration. To quote AFL-CIO President Rich Trunka in a statement he issued earlier this year, following a series of anti-immigrant executive orders issued by the Trump administration, this is what President Trunka said: "Building a wall on our border, scapegoating immigrants and refugees, and shutting out people of Muslim faith will do nothing to uplift working people in our country. To the contrary, these orders sow fear of raids among workers, promote racial profiling, and erode constitutional protections. As such, they are a clear attack on our members. And elevated fear is a direct obstacle to workers' rights to organize and bargain collectively." So how does the current ramped-up enforcement impact worker rights? Undocumented workers have rights under the federal wage and hour laws, as well as under occupational safety and health laws. Yet we know the rates of wage theft and workplace injuries among Latino workers are significantly higher than any other group. By one estimate, 78% of Latino workers in minimum-wage industries report not receiving a required overtime, with an even higher incidence among immigrants. In 2015, the workplace fatality rate was nearly 20% higher for Latino workers than for all other workers. Unscrupulous employers prey on the undocumented with the thought that these workers are much less likely to demand unpaid wages or challenge unsafe working conditions for fear that the employer may report them to ICE. Significantly increasing this fear appears to be the Trump administration's principal policy goal when it comes to immigration. Arrests by ICE have increased by nearly 40% between January 22 and April 29, when compared with the same time period last year. The undocumented now fear attending parent-teacher meetings at their kid's school or going to small claims court for fear that ICE may show up to arrest them. The number of Latinos reporting sexual assault has dropped 25% in Los Angeles and 40% in Houston. The consensus among advocates for victims of sexual assault is that these decreases are the direct result of the increased fear undocumented immigrants have of being arrested by ICE should they approach local law enforcement. Should we be surprised then when groups like mine, who try to assist immigrants with unpaid wages and workplace injuries, are witnessing major decreases in the number of immigrant workers contacting us for assistance? Ramp-up enforcement is creating a level of fear I've not seen in the 17 years that I've been navigating for undocumented workers. Now, more than ever, we need to create safe spaces for these workers and their families. Now, more than ever, we must find ways to extend the idea of sanctuary beyond churches and schools and courtrooms and extend sanctuary to our workplaces. So how do we create sanctuary workplaces? That is to say, places where workers' rights are respected because workers are assured that their employer cannot subject them to arrest and deportation by ICE. Unions and other parts of the country have been successful in negotiating contract language that bars the presence of federal immigration agents in the workplace without a valid warrant. In California, unions have lobbied the state legislature to introduce legislation that would require employers to ask for a warrant before granting ICE access to a workplace and prohibits employers from sharing confidential information about employees with federal immigration agents without a court order. Could the city of Pittsburgh adopt such a requirement for all employers operating in the city? Given our status as a Home Rule Charter municipality, it appears pretty certain that such a regulation would be struck down by the courts. So what can the city realistically do to assure that workers' rights, all workers, documented and undocumented, are protected? To begin with, the city council could pass a resolution similar to the one passed last April by the city of Oakland, California, in which the city calls on all employers operating within its jurisdiction to, quote, "establish sanctuary workplaces where workers are respected and not threatened or discriminated against based on immigration status." Next, the city could explore its business licensing authority to require licensees to certify that they are in compliance with all OSHA standards, have no outstanding judgments against them for unpaid wages, no labor law violations, and that they follow a policy of not granting access to the workplace to federal immigration agents without a warrant and not sharing confidential employee information with federal immigration agents unless presented with a court order. So to summarize, the current work environment for Latino workers here in Pittsburgh and across the country is the worst it's been in generations. Wage theft and unsafe working conditions, which had already reached epidemic proportions among Latino workers, will almost certainly worsen as the fear promulgated by the Trump administration's ramped-up immigration enforcement policies emboldens unscrupulous employers to violate worker rights. The AFL-CIO, recognizing the tremendous contributions of Latino workers, documented and undocumented, that these workers have made to the economic prosperity of the United States and the increasing importance of Latino workers to the country's economic future, based on this understanding of why the Latino workforce is so important to our future, the National Labor Federation has condemned this administration's policy of sowing fear through stepped-up enforcement. Pittsburgh LACLA calls on this Commission and the city of Pittsburgh to join us in the fight to counter the fear promulgated by this policy by declaring Pittsburgh a sanctuary city and by pursuing policies that promote sanctuary workplaces, workplaces where workers' rights are respected regardless of the worker's national origin or immigration status. Making smart use of the city's business licensing authority by denying or suspending business licenses to employers who violate worker rights would be an example of such a policy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Thank you for those important insights. Ms. Timsina, can you tell me, looking at these policies, how have they affected the very people that you work with in their employment pursuits?
Good afternoon, everyone. I work with Refugee Youth Employment Program through Jewish Family and Children's Service. Is it? Through Jewish Family and Children's Service. So refugee youth have been coming to Allegheny County, and it's a growing segment of Allegheny County's population today. These youths have lived their life homeless or, you know, fleeing persecution in their home country and then living in the refugee camp. They have faced a lot of barriers, same type of barriers like youth at RICs here in America, such as reading deficient and struggling to find meaningful employment. These youths have come with a lot of dreams, but sometimes if they are not tracked, they lose the path. So in addition to language barrier, they also have cultural challenges or cultural barrier here. Coming to the new land and making that adjustment is a huge thing for them and for their family. So living everyday life here in the U.S. and comparing their life in refugee camp, there's a huge difference. And to make that adjustment between refugee life and the life in America, youths have so much challenges. Without having any intervention from agencies, these youths may lack, you know, may lack to progress, and they may fall into RICs population, at RICs population. So what we have done is at Jewish Family and Children's Services, we have a program called Youth Employment Program where we help bridge this gap between youth and the American workforce system and the education system. As these youths and their parents lack education, knowledge on education system and also in the workforce system. So with the support, with some support, these youth would be able to do good. They are motivated and they are very willing to succeed, but they need some guidance. Some of the challenges are, you know, I already mentioned, language, culture are the main ones, transportation, access to transportation, and understanding job market. Also, some youth face discrimination at work. Knowingly or not knowingly, they face discrimination because of the language, and sometimes even because, although they speak English because of the accent, there is discrimination. And at times, we have also found that there is lack of understanding from employer on their visa status. So those challenges are faced by refugee youths. Lack of support, guidance, and counseling or advocacy from the family, from their immediate family member or from within the community, because the community itself is new and, you know, and the family, they themselves have their own challenges. So what does RYEAP do with this youth? Is we help them explore careers. We show them the labor market statistics and help them make a career path for their We do programs in two schools, and we have seen success in them that with something, some external help besides school help, they could do, they could do very well. Youth are going to college now, and whoever has entered workforce, we have seen better retention, better understanding between employer and employee. So these are the challenges. I think I don't have much to say, but these were the main challenges.
Thank you. Thank you for helping us understand a little bit more about the refugee youth. And so shall we move on to Ms. McCants Lewis? Thank you. Ms. McCants Lewis, from a civil rights standpoint, I wonder if you can help us understand what can individuals do in these times?
I think the most important thing to do is to educate oneself on the rights that immigrants have when in the United States. Although immigrants are non-citizens, they are entitled to the constitutional protections that we have that are embodied in our Constitution and our Bill of Rights, meaning that they are entitled to those same rights even though they are non-citizens, meaning that they have protection, equal protection of the law, meaning that the laws must be followed before their rights are violated or so that their rights are not violated, to protect them from governmental abuse and discrimination. And right now, I think what we're seeing, it's important for immigrants to know what their rights are and to understand that so that they can engage and say, "I have a right to not be searched. I have a right to not be detained without a warrant." So to know those things. And education is also important. So following up on what Ms. Timsina just said, I'd like to announce, there was a case that the ACLU of Pennsylvania took on in Lancaster County, ISA versus the School District of Lancaster, and just today, the case was settled. The judge signed a consent decree. The basis of this case, the lawsuit was filed against the School District of Lancaster because it was illegally refusing to enroll older immigrant students with limited English into a proficiency program so that they could learn English, become proficient, so that they can get the education that they were entitled to. But instead, they were diverting them to an inferior accelerated program, which many of them could not finish and oftentimes dropped out of school. So with this consent decree, all immigrants, whether older or students of an age going into the grade that they are, will be entitled to enroll in a ESL program at that school. So again, giving these immigrants the same rights and privileges that we have, that they are entitled to when they are here on our land. We have to know as citizens that they are entitled to that, and they must know that they have those rights. So we know that immigrants are non-citizens, however, they do have some certain statuses. They can become permanent residents through having a green card, meaning that they've been sponsored by a family or an employer. But then there are also non-immigrants that have certain status if they come with a visa. So they may be in the U.S. temporarily for work, study, tourism, or business. And then there are those that are undocumented, that enter the United States without a visa or without lawful permission. But as Mr. Perez talked about, what we're seeing right now is heightened use of detainers, heightened use of enforcement from ICE that is creating an environment of oppression. I think if we look at what the current administration is doing and the statements and messages that they're sending out, I think one such message was that municipalities had to basically violate the rights and constitutional rights of individuals to enforce a detainer or lose federal funding. That is illegal. It's plainly illegal under our system of government. There is a case here in the Third Circuit in which Pennsylvania sits, a 2014 lawsuit, again, that was brought by the ACLU, and it ruled that ICE detainers are not binding on municipalities. A municipality that honors a detainer to hold a person mistakenly, they can be sued successfully for false arrest. Again, so an immigrant needs to know that these are rights that they have. With ICE detainers, if an individual is arrested on a local criminal charge, ICE can take custody of that individual once they are released. But I have a form here that I got off of the government's website with regard to non-immigrant status. So if an individual has a status as a non-immigrant, this is a page and a quarter of different statuses that an individual must know that they can possibly fit into. So again, knowledge and understanding of the rules and the laws is paramount to being able to protect your rights. So with regard to ICE enforcement or immigration enforcement, their detainer policy, when law enforcement agencies fail to honor an immigration detainer and release a serious criminal offender, ICE is saying it undermines their ability to protect public safety and carry out its mission. So in April 2 of 2017, there is a new retainer, detainer policy that the Department of Homeland Security has released that, again, gives information telling when an individual may be detained under an ICE detainer. But again, knowing what your rights are, there is a notice to the detainee. One of the most important things in this particular, this new detainer agreement is that Department of Homeland Security has requested a law enforcement agency, let's say Pittsburgh, is holding someone. They have to maintain custody of that individual for no longer than 48 hours. If they do, and that individual is released based upon their criminal charges, but if the Department of Homeland Security does not take custody of that person within 48 hours, the detainee has a right to contact the Pittsburgh police and say, "I must be released." I think many individuals don't know that. I'm hoping that the City of Pittsburgh Police follows this policy, and I'm sure that they will, but this policy is in writing, and it has been a violation in the past, where individuals were held well beyond the 48 hours in which they were supposed to be in custody. So again, it's in writing. Individuals need to know that. They need to know that that is their constitutional right to be released after that 48 hours if DHS has not picked them up. So what are some of the grounds for removal? They include overstaying one's visa, entering the United States without inspection, unauthorized employment, conviction of aggravated felonies, or conviction of a crime that is considered to be one of moral turpitude, or a sentence, a crime that has a sentence punishable by more than one year, high-speed flight, conviction of drug offenses, even if someone is a abuser of drugs or addiction-dependent, which I really have a problem with when we look at what's happening in the United States right now with individuals in the opioid crisis. We're looking at it as a public health matter. I think for immigrants, that they should be treated the same way. It should be a public health matter if they are here lawfully. Also, marriage fraud, and those are just some of the things that can be looked at as grounds for removal. Last few things I want to say again, immigrants as non-citizens, but again, they still have rights under the law. So one of the things that individuals should know is what they can do or what they cannot do when stopped by an ICE agent or a police officer. So their rights on the street, if an immigrant is stopped by a police officer on the street, if that officer says that you are free to go, you can go. But if they are told that they cannot go, they should remain silent. Don't say anything, because again, anything that you say can be used against you in a court of law or with ICE. In Pennsylvania, there is no duty to give a police officer information such as your name, address, or immigration status. However, if you choose not to show ID and provide your name, you could be detained longer while they attempt to identify you. However, so that's for with police. But if an immigrant is detained by an immigration agent, they have to give over their papers if they have them. If you are undocumented and an immigration agent asks your status, again, remain silent because whatever you say can be used against you. When stopped in a car, if you're stopped by a police officer or an immigration agent and they want to search your car, you can refuse, just like a U.S. citizen has a right to refuse a search, an unlawful search. An immigrant can do the same. If undocumented and a police officer phones an immigration agent or puts you on the phone with an immigration agent, it's best for that individual, again, to remain silent. Rights at home, if an immigration agent or a police officer shows up at an immigrant's home to search the home, they should not let them in if they do not have a search warrant with a court address on it. These are some of the rights that individuals need to know as an immigrant. So I do have some materials that are outside on the table to, again, give immigrants just some information on what rights they have when stopped by police or stopped by immigration agents and how those rights can be enforced. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McCants Lewis. Mr. Perez, can I just address a follow-up question? As the Commissioner, as the Commission on Human Rights Relations here, what can we do to address the needs of our immigrant and refugee population that have experience in, you know, employment discrimination? What can we do to encourage them to come and speak with us? I hear you say that a sanctuary city is a hope. Is there something we can do in the meantime?
I think that it's, I think that it's very important that, that as a city, we address directly the threat that's presented to the undocumented population within our city by the approach that ICE has taken, which is a very aggressive approach, showing up at places with a hope of finding people there, actively, as I said, sowing this fear, this fear that you, I mean, fear to even walk your children to school. We're having to tell people, if someone knocks at your door and they say they're police, maybe you don't open the door then either because you don't know. The ICE people walk around with police written on their vests, but they're not police, but they go around pretending to be. It's very, very difficult. As I said, we used to get, you know, we don't have a worker center here in Pittsburgh, a center that would deal directly with issues around wage theft. So I'm often given these calls, often come to my organization and then we try to help people out. Before this election, I would get calls almost every week. Since the election, I've probably gotten two calls. The level of fear is just tremendous. So I wish I had an easy answer for you, other than the things that I had suggested. I think this commission has to take seriously that there's a major element of racial profiling that goes into how ICE decides who they're going to go after. You know, I probably shouldn't say this because my boss is Canadian, but there are 100,000 undocumented Canadians in this country. I haven't met a single one that's ever had an issue with ICE. To me, it's very clear how ICE is operating and who are they preying on. And as I said before, as a trade unionist, I believe completely, the intention here is not to deport 11 million people. The intention here is to create fear so that these people can be more easily exploited. That's really, to me, that's really what this is about. So I think the commission has to take this head on. I think the commission has to speak directly to the fact that the overwhelming majority of undocumented people in this country are Latino. They are often identified by their outward appearance. And as a result of that, they are racially profiled. Their rights on the job, in addition to their civil rights, their workplace rights, their rights to minimum wage, their rights to overtime, their rights to having a safe and healthy workplace, these are violated on a, as I said before, it's at an, you know, it's epidemic proportions for Latino workers. And remember Latinos, you know, the majority of Latinos in the United States are not undocumented, but 15% of us are. And if you add the families that have undocumented members, well, obviously, we're hugely impacted by this. So I think, I think the commission needs to get serious about looking at, you know, how do we create a sense of security for undocumented families in this city? How can we create, give them some assurance that when they come to this commission or come to any agency of this city, that there is not information sharing between the city government and immigration officials? We have to take some very transparent affirmative steps to make it very clear that your status or lack of status does not make you any less of a human being and that you are part of this city and you are part of this family. And we have to, this is really dire. This is really dire and I really hope, because I'm convinced that the future of this city is dependent on immigration. I think that's, I absolutely believe that. This will make, this is a great city, but it's not a diverse city. It's not diverse enough. It hurts us in so many different ways and it hurts us economically and workers are hurt by that as well. So we, I applaud the mayor for wanting us to be a more diverse city. I applaud his leadership in trying to create a welcoming city, but it's not nearly enough. It's not nearly enough. And again, I want to express my genuine appreciation to this commission for taking the interest and inviting us here. And I very much look forward to working with you and trying to solve, it's a difficult problem you raised, but I think if we work hard enough, we'll find a way.
Well, thank you very much to our three guest speakers today. You have left us with some significant insights, passionate insights. I do want to emphasize that the commission, in taking our complaints, we do not ask the status of the employee that is filing and we also provide free of charge language services when requested. So hopefully that's something that all can share out there.
Can I ask you very quickly, though? Is this information put in any kind of database and is it a database that any law enforcement agency would have access to?
I will turn to my chair to ask that question.
Of course, we have a chief here as well. Okay. We have not constructed a database, but this is the first. So we are moving towards a new campaign. We are, as well as law enforcement, to make sure we can properly support our constituents. We are a law enforcement agency, commission, and we are charged with the rule of law enforcement law. But also, our focus is on community attention as well as is to make recommendations to our statement, as far as possible change in our policies and laws that need to change associated with this present time. So we have a major charge and what we do, but the biggest part of the world is to send you out with a major show of people, actually, to understand what is the issue, what is the problem and hopefully we can address that as a holistic policy.
We do not share information.
With any law enforcement agency, because all it takes is one and ICE has access to all of that information.
We do not, we didn't.
They do share a database.
We do not share information with police.
All right. That's great to hear. Good.
Okay, well, so we conclude then this session on interior enforcement and employment discrimination intimidation. And now we will go on to our next and final session with the community police relations. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So much.